All right, is everybody ready? Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I call to order the regular meeting of the Tracy City Council at 6:30 PM on Tuesday, November 12th, 2019. Please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
The pledge of allegiance is applied to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I guess we're gonna be invocationless tonight. Plus, you wanna get up there, Dave?
Nope, I just said we're all blessed, so...
Okay. All right, everybody get a chance to read over the minutes. If you find any typos or inaccuracies...
Move to approve.
Second.
First and second, any discussion? We go ahead and vote.
Patel?
Aye.
Jerry Shones?
Aye.
Dave Teigs?
Aye.
Tony Peters?
Aye.
Mayor Dimmers?
Aye. Minutes are approved as written. Do we have any additions to the agenda?
Mr. Mayor, we have two additions. Need to add 10F. That'll be to approve a plumber's license for Quist Plumbing and Heating Incorporated. And then we have 10G, which is set snow date for truth and taxation hearing.
Okay.
Make a motion to approve as amended.
Thank you. First and second, any questions or discussion? Go ahead and vote.
Peterson?
Aye.
Shones?
Aye.
Teigs?
Aye.
Patel?
Aye.
Mayor Dimmers?
Aye. Agenda is approved as amended. Anybody have, identify any conflicts of interest this evening? Anybody from the public have any comments on anything that is not on the agenda? ISG update, please.
So, just a quick update on the construction. Dunick, as you saw, came in and paved last Saturday. They should be done with utility work on Hollitt and that block of Emery until next spring anyways, when they'll continue on from there. They do not intend to place any new curb or sidewalk this fall yet. For the sidewalk, they are gonna be patching it in with gravel, trying to level it all off so that it is still usable through the winter, though. They'll be doing some sidewalk ramping from the road as well, just to maintain access as best we can during the winter. You might've noticed, over in Central Park, they started digging today. They're gonna be placing the sanitary sewer through the park. They should be done with that this week yet, probably. They're gonna stop shy of Second Street, though, so that they're not tearing up any more pavement this year. Do you guys have any questions or anything on the construction?
Do we have a tentative date for when they're gonna pick it up in the spring?
It all depends on the weather. Usually it'll be around May 1st, sometime like that, but...
Yeah, that's all I was looking for, was a ballpark. I mean, obviously, the weather's gonna be a player, but... And where are they gonna start at that time?
My guess would be they'll have one crew at Second and Harvey and another one at Second and Hollitt. So they'll have one getting started on all the main chunks on the southern part of the project, kind of. And that crew at Second and Hollitt will do Second and Hollitt, Third Street north of Hollitt, and Emery Street from Third to Fourth, just kinda fill in those areas up there that they didn't get to this year.
Great. Anybody have any questions?
Do any storm updates through the park there?
So, next summer, they will be along Park Street. There's gonna be a berm going in, kinda where the warming house is right now. And then off the Second Street storm line, there's a 48-inch there, we'll be bringing an inlet-outlet pipe in that goes into the park. So during large events, when the pipes are overloaded, there'll be temporary storage there, kind of. It'll go up with the water and then drain down right away as soon as let's...
That was good.
And you're increasing the size from the Fourth and Roland section?
Yes. We're also upsizing, increasing capacity back to Fourth and Roland there, so...
Good, good.
All righty. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Request to close the meeting for the half-smeen negotiations. Do that.
Make a motion to go into closed session after the regular portion for negotiations.
Second?
First and second, anybody have any discussion with that? Go ahead and vote.
Shones?
Aye.
Patel?
Aye.
Teigs?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
Mayor Dimmers?
Aye. So, that's approved. We'll do that after this regular meeting is concluded, or at the end of it. Approval of delinquent items to be certified for special assessments. What do we have for that, Shane?
There's a listing of mostly their mowing. Find the list here in my... Is it in the agenda packet?
Couple pages worth.
Most mowing, couple yards. Does that go along with the resolution?
It's down by resolutions, though.
That's just the same thing we do every year on anything that's outstanding. We put it on there.
Yeah, I mean, it's the season for...
So, I'd make a motion to approve Resolution 2019-69, moving the delinquent bills to special assessment.
I'll second that, but I have a question under discussion.
Okay, go ahead.
There is a property listed in there that we used to have a $28,000 assessment against, as long as we're leveling mowing assessments back onto that property. Can we put that 28 grand back on that lot, or not?
I don't know if we can or not. My guess, county.
They waived it.
So it's for the demolition of the building?
That was there, yep.
And the building wasn't waived? Or the building wasn't...
It was demoed, and then they waived that charge to give it to the people listed now that, so they could have a garden, and nothing ever came out of that garden. That's why it's being mowed. So it's nothing that, for the agreed-upon reason for the waiving the assessments, was ever completed.
It would depend on how the resolution reads. The resolution has that stipulation in there?
I don't remember. I wasn't on the council when they waived it. I just know they did. But I would ask and see if we could get that back on there. I don't know, we'll probably wind up waiving it again, but if not...
At least it's out there.
Yeah.
Or check on how it was worded and taken care of in the first place.
Any idea when that was, Tony? Do you have any idea when that was?
It was about when they bought it, so I can look it up.
Yeah.
About three, four years ago?
Four, at least, maybe four and a half, yeah.
Do we want a table till then?
No, we could approve this. I just, under discussion, so we can look at that, 'cause we can do that at any time.
All right.
If allowed, so...
We'll have to look into that.
That's all I have.
Are we still in discussion?
We are.
I don't know if you looked at the consent calendar at all, but we did pay that 173 Ninth Street back for...
Yeah, I did see that, yep.
So that special assessment's been satisfied, so...
Okay.
I think she did a good job cleaning that corner up.
Any other discussion, questions? Go ahead and vote.
Peterson?
Aye.
Patel?
Aye.
Shones?
Aye.
Teigs?
Aye.
Mayor Dimmers?
Aye. So, the Resolution 2019-69, approving the 2019 delinquent bills to be certified to county as special assessments for 2020, passes. Minnesota wellhead protection, it's a new requirement. Is it a requirement, or is it recommended?
Sounds like a requirement, but they're not gonna really enforce the requirement until they have gone out and helped all the cities comply with it. So it's kinda in the works of being a requirement, so just trying to keep the ball moving forward on it.
What's it gonna cost us?
I don't think it's gonna cost us anything, but maybe, based on what she told me, maybe a recording, you know, some kind of legal fee for something along the line, but it'd be pretty minimal, if that. They're actually helping us with the plan. They put together everything they've done so far, so I can't imagine it'd be too much to... It's gonna be, I'm gonna say it's gonna be another year or two yet before it's actually in effect, but...
This is informational?
Informational. If you have any questions, we do need just a motion to approve the step one, which is really all it is, is if you look at the map, Well 6 and 7 are the two yellow dots. Those are currently the two wells that the city pulls their water from. And then they have on Part 1, just kinda give the information on the well, and then the vulnerability, you know, based on the geographic position, you know, area in the topography, it's a low vulnerability, you know, within their protection area for the next 10 years, so... They're not seeing anything that's gonna be a major problem moving forward, so there's not a hazardous waste facility in that outlined area at all, so we're in pretty good shape.
In that outlined area, that is pretty much where all the water's gonna come from?
Yeah, it's kinda based on the watershed. You may have seen the drone footage of the flood, it kinda follows that same path, but, you know, the blue area, that's the wellhead protection area that they deemed, and then the red area is emergency response area. I'd say both areas are pretty...
I'm gonna guess the big area is the red area. No, it's not, it's the small area.
Must not have went over in color.
It did not. I've got gray and grayer.
It's the littler circles are emergency response area and the bigger...
Okay.
Looks like a big finger.
It does, look at that.
So, that's what they're looking at. They just need a motion from the council to approve this Part 1, and then they'll start working on Part 2, which is four pages, but not much to look at, but...
I'd make a motion to approve the wellhead protection memo.
Second.
First and second, any other discussion or questions? We'll go ahead and vote.
Shones?
Aye.
Patel?
Aye.
Teigs?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
Mayor Dimmers?
Aye. So, the wellhead protection memo, step one, is approved. Accept the airport board resignation from Dave Algar.
I'll make a motion that we accept Dave's resignation from the airport board.
Second.
First and second, discussion or questions? Go ahead and vote.
My only question is, so you'll post for another member to get appointed, or for people to apply?
Okay, so, any further discussion or questions? All right, we'll go ahead and vote.
Peterson?
Aye.
Patel?
Aye.
Teigs?
Aye.
Shones?
Aye.
Mayor Dimmers?
Aye. So, acceptance of the airport board resignation from Dave is accepted. Approve Wells' contract.
Included in your packet is LELS tentative agreement with all the changes that were discussed. I guess it's up for signatures. We either need to approve it or...
I'd make a motion to approve the contract.
Second.
First and second, any discussion or questions? Go to vote.
Teigs?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
Shones?
Aye.
Patel?
Aye.
Mayor Dimmers?
Aye. The LELS contract is approved. Approve plumber's license, Quist Plumbing and Heating, Inc.
Make a motion to approve pending receipt of any fees required.
They've been received.
Second. First and second, questions or discussion? We'll go ahead and vote.
Patel?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
Teigs?
Aye.
Shones?
Aye.
Mayor Dimmers?
Aye. The plumber's license, Quist Plumbing and Heating, is approved. Snow date for truth and taxation hearing. So we had that on the 9th of December. So, do we wanna pump it to the 23rd, then, on a snow day, or not?
We have no meeting.
Oh, that's right, we do not. That's December.
The 20th to 16th, the next Monday, just in case, if that makes sense?
Yeah, that's still fairly mid-month and far enough away from Christmas, I think, that it won't mess with anybody's travel plans.
Do we have to have anything done by any specific time?
I think within that week, you're okay.
Okay.
What time?
We have to have the final budget sent to the county by the end of November, and that's just, they come in and ask...
Nope.
...how it's been handled, so...
Just making sure that we didn't have to have anything approved by a specific date.
I'm below any timelines. Anybody have travel plans or anything that's gonna interfere with?
It won't snow on the 9th anyhow, so...
All right.
What time?
No, not at all, since it's already come a few inches this month. Should we make that 6:30, or...
Sounds good.
Okay, so, I'll make the motion that we set the 16th at 6:30 for a snow day for levy and truth and taxation.
Right.
First and second, any further discussion or questions? Go ahead and vote.
Teigs?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
Patel?
Aye.
Shones?
Aye.
Mayor Dimmers?
Aye. So, December 16th will be the snow day.
Make a motion to approve Resolution 2019-68, designating the VMC as our polling place.
Second.
First and second, any discussion? Go ahead and vote.
Peterson?
Aye.
Shones?
Aye.
Teigs?
Aye.
Patel?
Aye.
Mayor Dimmers?
Aye. Resolution 2019-68, designate a polling place here at the VMC, is approved. Consent calendar?
Motion to approve municipal accounts payable without breakthrough beverage in Sanford Health, approve the October 7 Planning Commission, and approve the fire relief minutes we've received.
Second. That is a wide-sweeping motion. Any discussion or questions on that? Go ahead and vote.
Peterson?
Aye.
Patel?
Aye.
Shones?
Aye.
Teigs?
Aye.
Mayor Dimmers?
Aye. So, without breakthrough beverage in Sanford Health, and planning minutes, and fire relief minutes are all approved. How about breakthrough beverage?
Remove.
Second. First and second, discussions or questions? Go to vote.
Patel?
Aye.
Shones?
Aye.
Teigs?
Aye.
Vote, wait, I'm out on that one.
Yep. Sorry about that. Peterson?
Aye.
Mayor Dimmers?
Aye. Breakthrough beverage is approved.
Motion to approve Sanford Health.
Second.
Questions, discussion? Go ahead and vote.
Teigs?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
Patel?
Aye.
Mayor Dimmers?
Aye. Sanford Health is approved. Unfinished business. City Administrator Applications Committee.
This is discussed in the last two meetings, on whether they wanna set up a committee to narrow down the applicants. Right now, we're at about 11. I have gotten a couple in the last couple days, I don't know what our final number's gonna be, but, you know, the chance we could get two or three yet, but I wonder what your thoughts were, 'cause I know, I think there's interest in doing that as we did before when we hired Chris, so... Up for discussion.
I was not part of that process, so I guess I don't really have a...
Two members of the council last time, and then some members of the public.
I mean, I was part of that process. I thought that process was probably a little bit more speedy, because we didn't have to worry about the open meeting laws and stuff like that, but the council still saw the applications, and they were involved in the final. The committee more or less narrowed it down to whatever we would decide, two or three, that then the full council would...
So done by a scoring thing, like we did with the last round here? I mean, how does that, y'all just discuss it and go, "Okay, well, we like this one or this one," or is there a scoring matrix that's used, or...
We still used a scoring matrix, but then, you know, discussed it, because sometimes the three of us might score totally different, you know, that maybe my top scored was you're second to the bottom, and so then we would still kind of discuss as to, you know, 'cause there you have a little more flexibility to maybe then have some interviews, because you're not having to get the full council involved in every one of those.
Yeah, I kinda felt like that was missing in the last round we did, where it was just straight-up scoring, and then there was no real discussion about it, and that felt like there was a piece missing, so... I don't know how you all feel about that, but we seemed to have a good result the last time. We got Chris out of it.
The times I ran it, we just, it's a two ways. I had a committee of people from the public score whatever, give recommendations to council, and the council did the interview. The next time, the council scored it, picked it, and did the interviews, they're both effective, they're, it's six of one, half dozen of another.
It is, I mean...
It really is. I mean, I think what I would like to see is, I'd like to see all the apps, and I'd like to be able to score them, and then do that before they meet at a committee, and that's fine, but that's what I'd like to see. But I can deal with anything.
I would tend to agree with that, but I would also think that it's good to have the public involved, since, you know, they're gonna be, I mean, we all gonna have to live with it, but, you know, they should be heard, too, or have, you know, have some input into...
What I had on the committee that I set up was former council members and mayors, school board members, and business owners.
Yeah.
You know, that's, but then that was, I don't remember if, it was five or seven of them, five, I think, and they got together, they scored it, and then gave it to the council.
My main goal is that it doesn't get so big that it gets drug out.
Right.
I think we've gone so long without a city administrator. Our interim has said he'll give us till January. Well, that's coming...
That's coming quick.
...fucking fast, and so we're talking with the holidays and everything, January's gonna come here before we know it.
When's our date for, again?
Friday, this coming Friday.
Do we have...
Is it to pick people from the community? I have no problem with community members' involvement, but how are you gonna make it fair that people that feel that they would wanna be included, so then are you gonna ask for applications for the community people that would wanna be on this? I think it would get it drug out more than what I would want it seen. I guess I feel we are here to represent the community, that we can represent the community.
I think you could get a committee of the two members of the council to go through them, as long as everybody had an input and had a chance to score them, and those two should be able to discuss it and be done with it, and bring the recommendations to the full council.
You know, and I think we set a deadline, when we all have to have our scoring done. We give ourselves a short deadline, so we're not the ones dragging it out, that we all come in here, look at the 11-plus apps.
So, Friday is when it's done, right?
Yep.
The 15th?
Yep.
Everybody could start scoring the apps that we got now.
Right.
You know, just come down and do it, type thing.
Have it done by the 20th? Is that too long?
That gives us Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, a week, no, today's...
Well, if everybody gets it scored by the 18th, 'cause you come in between now and the 15th, you could get a lot of it done. If any more show up, then you just have to come back to read one or two. If we start reviewing them now...
And we could potentially interview the, end of next week, too?
Yep.
Should we say to have it done by, in the business hours on the 8th? Can we go the 19th? As I'm saying, I don't wanna drag this out, now I'm the one saying. Let's go the 18th. Let's go the 18th, if everyone can make it by the 18th. That just means, any of that come in, we all are gonna be down here on the 18th, trying to look at those couple of...
Well, I will be in on the weekend, 'cause I gotta work all day, so...
And how do we do that on the weekend?
I can check your key out, leave him in here somewhere. We'll figure that out, if any more come in, or if somebody needs to, well, like Tony says he needs to come in, so, to work it around that way.
So everyone look at them by the 18th, score them, and then we just need to decide which...
Which two are gonna...
I do think Shane, as the interim, should be involved in it. I think he has a lot of knowledge as to what he's gotta be doing for the job.
Historically, that's been the case. Either the administrator or the interim administrator was involved in it.
I would volunteer to be on the committee, if somebody else would want to volunteer.
With you? When are we gonna do that?
We could say the 19th, if we, if everyone has to have the stuff done by the 18th. We could either do it the evening or the 18th. We could either do it the evening of the 18th, or we could do it the 19th.
And then interview by Friday? Well, no, because then it has to go to council then.
Yeah, I gotta name your top three or two or.
Yep.
So it's any, any time that week?
When's it come to full council, that would be the 25th.
Interviews would have to be that first week in December.
Yep. So.
Well, you'd have, well.
So we don't necessarily have to press for the 18th because it's not gonna come to council till the 25th anymore, so. If you wanted to go the 19th, you still could do that and have time for review.
And whoever is gonna do it with me, it would depend on, you know, the work schedules.
It could be even the 21st, if you want.
We would have up to the 24, or 21st to.
That's due to trying to get everything wrapped up for the council agenda, so.
I can do it with you if, I mean, I want to be fair about it, so if everybody's good with that.
I mean. So scoring by Monday and you two will have everything taken care of by Thursday? The discussion out. If there's any questions about who will we score out?
Yeah, and then.
And then present it on the 25th and.
Through the whole council?
That works.
And then we would set the interviews for.
Are we gonna do three again?
I guess.
Two, three?
Hard to say without going through them all.
Yeah, I'd like to see the applications before.
A maximum of three is what I'd say. If there's only two, then it's only two.
What if we got four?
I would.
Give me.
I just.
In the rare situation.
I have a meeting in the morning, I just need a little time to compile all the packets and organize it, so you guys have everything, because everything's in my email.
Talking about tomorrow morning?
So.
Earliest tomorrow afternoon.
Thursday. I would say mid tomorrow afternoon, I should have them all ready to go.
Okay.
Okay.
Just send out an email when they're ready.
I can do that.
Then we can email back when we're coming, you can keep track if we're crossing paths or not. Again, there wouldn't be any issue if just two of us were down there doing it at the same time anyway, so.
No, we can go up to two and that's fine.
It's just I thought if all of us would be down here on the 18th when we have two other ones to look at when we're fighting.
There's plenty of rooms.
No, when there's not many apps left, because they just came in.
Right. Well, we just need to be cognizant of the open meeting laws and, you know, three of us at one time. I think we can negotiate that. Or navigate it, whatever. Alright, so to be clear, you'll have the packets ready to go by tomorrow afternoon. Everybody will have until the 18th, or did you want to go to the 19th, Cherry?
Well, let's go 18th.
Okay, close the business on the 18th then?
Perfect.
And then you and I will take a look at it between, and we'll figure that out when we can sit down and go through them between the 19th and 21st. So that we have something by Thursday afternoon. And then it'll come to council on the 25th.
You, me and Shane.
And Shane, yes. I was just.
So you're on the committee?
Yep. Unless anybody's got an issue with that. So, yes. Do we need a motion for this, or just this is our, we just plan to do it?
It's the plan.
Minutes.
That's what I thought, but gotta make sure we dot the Ts and cross the Is, right? Okay, so let's move on. Sympathy cards sent to residents. Saw there was something there from.
Reach out to, Dan, reach out to Matt Gross.
Yep. Yep, there was. Basically, they're going.
Yeah, basically it was not a public expenditure.
Right.
Right.
You could do it on your behalf.
So I guess, you know, that sheds all the light on it we need, and that's why I asked the question. I think it would be a really cool thing to do, but. Alright. Do we have any new business? At this time, then, we will.
Motion to close the regular meeting?
Do we, we adjourn the regular meet, no, we.
Just close it.
We close it and then open, yes. Okay, vote?
Who seconded it?
I did.
You did, sorry, I missed it. Okay, Shones?
Aye.
Tell?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
Teigs?
Aye.
Mayor Dimmers?
Aye. At this time, the normal meeting is closed and we will take a short recess of five minutes or so, if anybody needs to, and then.